Thanks, you can sit right there if you don't mind introducing yourself and telling us who we have.
My name is Hannah Bolland, I'm with the National Land Management Society. I'm a logistics specialist for our force right under Emily Christian. I'm just here to go over our walk-in test capacity event. Been the same for pretty much the past 15 years. The route is the same, rest stop is the same, pretty much same deal as always.
Same deal as always, and this is, um...
May 4th.
Asking for Saturday, May 4th, and the event time is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
That is correct.
Beginning with the setup around 7:30?
Yep.
Something have any questions?
Nope, our participants are in charge of the walk on the sidewalks and follow the rules. Yep, we're working with the local piece of department to put details where they need necessary for the safety.
Anybody want to make a motion to...
Make a motion to approve the application for the National Land Management Society Walk, September 5th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. How can you thank so much, guys? May the square is quite the way to thank you. And Habitat for Humanity, Joe Regan. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So, same thing, introduce yourself and...
That means approved, right?
Yes. Still need to vote.
I'm sorry?
You still need to vote.
My name's Joe Regan, development officer for Habitat for Humanity. We have a ride that we host each year. We're doing it again this year, September 14th. And with the package, the application package, the map was embedded with details of the routes on the back.
Can you, just for the people watching at home, just kind of summarize the route through Cohasset?
Yep, basically, oh, it's described here on the map here. Otis Ave, Border Street, continue around the inn there at the Cove. Martin Street, Atlanta Gap, stay on Atlanta Gap, Jerusalem Road to Summit, and then into Hall. So, it's just a short stretch of the ride that goes through Cohasset. It depends on the route. It starts and ends in Hingham, but probably the people coming through here might be maybe 830. And it's just a small number of people, although the ride typically tracks maybe 75 riders. Only probably 15 of them will do the 50-mile route, which is the one that runs through that. And they'll break up in, so it's a matter of three to five people in little packs.
No, it looks like there's three, of course, there's a 15, a 25, and a 50-mile route.
Correct.
50-mile comes through town.
Exactly.
Alright, any other questions on this last one?
No, none here.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Habitat for Humanity 15, 25, 50-mile route through the Town Hall of Hasha on September 14th.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 250th Anniversary Committee, please hear from there. Nobody?
Well, we've got a couple hundred years...
That's right. Since we're running late, that could take a long time. Okay. And then, on our agenda, we are looking to interview two potential new members for the Town Hall Building Committee. And Mr. Lubitz can't be here tonight, but Mark Cameron. Do you want to come over here? How are you?
Good.
Thanks for submitting your application. Could you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Mark Cameron, I've got 14 years of commercial building experience. I worked for Turner Construction in Boston, currently working on a 22-story office building.
And then, did you, to what degree did you follow the Town Hall project last year?
I, just per Bril, I didn't really get too involved in it.
Yeah.
I was asked to join last year and I didn't.
Yep. About the time is now.
And then it kind of fizzled out and I just thought, I thought it was important for the town to have a good Town Hall, have a Town Hall downtown on the common where it is, keep the historic structure.
Have you, and I can't remember whether I sent this to you or anybody sent it, but was that Town Hall Building Committee charged?
No.
So, I will give this to you before you leave tonight. Basically, we had a charge last year and then some plans came forward, we didn't get the funding for them. So, we sort of reaffirmed and tailored some of the goals to meet that, that the Town Hall will be a 41-mile one-way. And we're at the point where we're going to add a couple new members to the committee. There's some people remaining on the committee and they're going to take these sort of goals and objectives that we've set forward and try to present something hopefully in the near future. So, we'll give you that, and does any of the staffmen have any questions on this Cameron?
What do you do for Turner Construction, what is it you're...
I'm a project manager at Ray Hall, focusing on mechanical, electrical, and fire protection systems of the office building that we're in. So, I'm a project manager and I'm in charge of coordinating the subs in the daily construction activity.
How long you been doing that?
14 years.
Fire suppression.
Do you have any air conditioning included?
Have you always just done HVAC or have you done full design-build? Have you done drawings and...
I've done, I've done design-build projects, haven't, again, in the construction management, not so much drawing and drafting, but more so managing of the processes and the contractors and issuing contracts, reviewing, leveling bids, scopes of works, that kind of issue.
Have you done bidding for these projects?
I have, yeah. I'm estimating and bidding and...
That skill will be helpful, well, I'm sure you know public facilities have a whole set of procurement laws that oversee that and they get coordinated through your Town Manager, but, you know, we need good eyes to understand those numbers that get back to us.
I don't doubt that you have all the skills that you need professionally to add to the committee. Have you ever worked on the committee?
I have not.
Okay.
Steve, don't scare him.
No, 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 I'm actually, first of all...
Yeah, do not scare him.
The most important piece of the committee, or working with the committee, is recognizing that everybody brings something to the table and sometimes your voice will be subjugated to someone else's. But ultimately, they'll come back around, that committee will come back around to tap your expertise. It's critically important to get to the bottom of the committee as opposed to your approach. I say this with a lot of painful experience. And I just bring it forward because we need people to step forward for the first time, to get their, their hands dirty, not with respect to the construction piece, you've got plenty of experience there, to get their hands dirty in helping to, helping the town to reach some successful conclusions. And if there's one single continuing hematoma that this town has, it's the inability to address Town Hall in a successful fashion. So, we need to help.
Hematoma, huh? Maybe we need a doctor.
Oh, there's a good chance of that. So, now, I have, I have no professional questions for Mr. Cameron. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Great. It's up to the board, if you want to vote. Okay, is there a motion to...
I make a motion to appoint Mark Cameron to the Town Hall Building Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There is some paperwork that you officially honor committee and then you'll hear from the chairs.
We have therapy sites.
Yes, no, we don't have therapy sites. But it can be very rewarding. Next up is Powers &amp; Sullivan for our annual audit. And review of our management letter.
Do you have some extra hard copies?
Oh, great, thank you. I know, either you guys are getting lazy in the management letter or...
Would you like the caper as well?
Yes, please.
I'll leave it to you to say.
Okay.
So, the cover, just for everybody out there, of our comprehensive annual financial report, which could be summarized by our auditors, is the solar array up behind the dump. Very exciting. Top of the dock, whatever. Go ahead. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. We were ready, ready to come up, come down a couple of weeks ago and thankfully, we got a call at the last second and all of a sudden we got gas to stop at our track.
I hope you didn't go too far, that was...
No, actually, we were both just within like two miles of the office, so I was getting gas because I figured it's a good idea to do that. We got the fork and all done and we turned around. First of all, my name is Jim Powers from Powers &amp; Sullivan, I'm partner on the engagement, it was me, is...
I'm Kyle Warren, I'm the manager with Powers &amp; Sullivan.
And we're here tonight to just briefly go over the results of operations of the 2018 audit. First off, I'd like to thank Chris and the staff and everybody involved. Unbelievable cooperative bunch you have down here that gives everything we ask for. Not much complaining, there's no auditors, we still are disruptive to the day-to-day operation. But we have the job to do to be independent and look through that. One of the things that you mentioned a little bit about the management letters getting really good, which is good. We do a lot of testing on the internal controls, we do a risk assessment as part of our initial audit, where we look at risks in operations, risks in possibilities of misstatement of financial statement, measures of likelihood that material error may occur that wasn't uncovered through the normal course of operations internally. The town does a great job reconciling its cash, which is the most important part of the biggest risk element, because you're kind of a cash-based operation. And you take a look at the risk elements for your revenues, they're not that difficult. When you take a look at revenue side of this, you're taking 45, $50 million in general fund, but because of your demographics, a huge portion of that is real estate and personal property taxes. Do a good job in collection, tax liens, making sure that the receivables are collected on a regular basis, and they are. So, there's no significant risk there, we've tested on that obviously, some state aid that comes through. And realistically, from a revenue standpoint, there's a lot of things online with the state. When you take a look at grants and maybe federal grants, et cetera. The state has an open checkbook, meaning that their entire ledger is open. If you go online, we see what happened two days ago and it gives you all the detail. We put in your code to town and we'll see every payment from the state, either directly from them to you or through the feds, through them to here. So, we can take a look at a lot of those things to verify the revenues have come in and they were properly accounted for. Your expenditures, realistically, would you break down your expenditures and your budget? Budget's part of the ledger, meaning that it's a legal required document, it's part of the ledger. So, from an analytical standpoint, that's great, because every budget is integrated as part of the ledger. It's not some spreadsheet or Excel sheet, it has to be balanced and it goes through that. We test the account, finance director's ledgers to make sure that we tie into the ledger 100% of all the ledger transfers that are made. So, we, again, we look at that as a risk, we let way to that. There's not a lot of transfers between funds, but when you take a look at the type of expenditures you have, it's a lot of it payroll in a service-based organization, you know, with a school, public works, et cetera. And as we go through the budget process, we take a look at the budget documents as we do. It's a real deliberative process of have a lot of detective controls that you know the employees that are working here. In addition to that, all the employees that are there have to be part of the retirement system. And so, there's another layer of other people, in order to pay someone, there has to be a retirement deduction. And that retirement deduction has to then be sent over to North Lawn County, that has to be there, has to go through human resources. So, there's a lot of detective controls and so we do a lot of analytical work as part of the audit to see what's there and things really work out well. And most places have the same good controls, if you get through, but the reconciling of the activity is really important. Looking at things with a skeptic-like, woman audit is near point, but even your finance people looking at things, if something doesn't look right, they usually check intuit mistakes are made. So, we don't have and haven't had any what we call audit adjustments in years. We assist the town put together the financial statements because we have a process that does that. Dawn takes responsibility and Chris takes responsibility for these financial statements. These are not ours, we owe the audit opinion, which is unmodified or unqualified, best opinion you can get. And so, that's the biggest thing you want to and need to worry about. We don't set policy, we just take a look and see whether or not your assertions in the financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and they are, and you apply them correctly. We assist in any new GASB implementations, government accounting standards for it, to make sure things are done right. And previous management letters gave informational comments for the new OPEB standard, or the public funded benefit standard, that was implemented correctly this year. We had to change when we revised the beginning balance. And in effect, we had talked about this in the past, where the OPEB and the pension and that liability, those are your two big unfunded liabilities and that's the biggest concern you have from a long-term perspective. And you're in the same place as pretty much everybody else out of North Lawn County. Most of the counties still have a long way to go to fully fund the pension liability. It's going to take a while to get there, we're at like the 2040. You're working along any OPEB liability, making contributions to the trust, but still, at that point in time, you're still only about 6% funded at the end of the year. But you are making inroads and contributing to that trust over time. Most places are going to get there, that's not a legal requirement, you don't have to put anything aside, but it's some business decisions to start with and trust.
We have a committee that's been working all year long and will be making recommendations starting next year.
And one of the things, yeah, and one of the things that will help you with that, right now, you're using a discount rate, a blended rate of 3.95%, which is good, because your trust isn't sufficient to carry and have enough money to pay for all the future benefits. And so, as you build that up, instead of using a discount rate of 3.95%, which is almost a risk-free rate, the GASB requires that you use a 20-year municipal, a double-A municipal bond rate. It's disclosed in the financials and depending, those usually run between three and, you know, high threes. So, you're partially funded putting money aside.
Yeah.
So, basically, what the actuary does and part of the committee, they only think it's going to last seven years. For the first seven years, you use a higher discount rate and then blend that with the remaining years to come up with a 3.9% reasonable amount, you know, that improves inflation as part of that as you go through, you're down to your real rate of return. So, you're not in bad shape in relative to a lot of other communities, but it's obviously the biggest thing from a long-term perspective. From a short-term's perspective, you have, you budget conservatively in the general fund and you really want to watch that general fund. You had surplus revenues or excess revenues over budget of almost a million dollars, which is good, because you'd rather spend money after you get it as opposed to hoping you get it. Because if you have, if you think it really pushed the envelope on that, if you have a revenue deficit, you need to know that early, which I think you can because of the accounting process that you have in place, but not lose money for the year or dip into fund balance. You have to go in and the only other way to go is have a spending freeze. Nobody wants that, and so that way you can use your free cash as you see fit. You can still fund and send money over to the stabilization fund. You can go over $5 million in all your stabilization funds, and even your fund balance for the year, you get a hundred to turn back to about, what did have, $500,000. And so, you had a surplus for the year of $800,000, so when you add the general fund together with the stabilization funds, you're pretty good shape with $800,000 in total reserves that you can spend as you go forward. And you had about $800,000, $870,000 for the carryovers for next year. So, you know, again, it's good, we don't comment on the fact that you're budgeting that way. We would if we were seeing a problem the way you budgeted. We saw a lot of deficits in your revenue projections, we probably have a point on that that you really should not do that, or if you're dipping in your fund balance for operations.
Not under our watch.
Not under your watch. And one of the good things the CAPA does in the comprehensive annual financial report is in the back in the statistical section, there's 10-year trends history that will track your fund balance or your net positions for the last 10 years, and so you can see how well you've done over time. Same thing in the required supplementary information for your OPEB and for your pension standards inside of the financial statements. It'll give you a 10-year history of what was your liability, and again, this is building for the last several years, OPEB standard, we have two years back there right now, last year, because we had to do the beginning balance adjustment. So, what was it at the beginning of fiscal year 18, what was it at the end of fiscal year 18? And it tells you why things changed from the total OPEB or pension liability and how your trusts changed. And it also give you the actual money weighted rate of returns as part of that. So, if you take a look at your discount rate, if you're worrying whether or not you are too high on a lot of those things, it will, it will tell you what your investment rate is. So, it's some good information in the CAPA that you can do that. Other funds that you have are special revenue funds, non-major funds. You know, they include grants, community preservation, public community preservation, utility life, and special revenue fund. And you have some miscellaneous capital project funds along with some trust funds as part of that, the non-majors. They're self-supporting, and being self-supporting, grant consideration funded, we did best compliance with the grant. We did not see any issues relative to how that operated. It's a long report, so I didn't do this presentation to walk you through every page.
Right.
Okay? I know you probably really want that to happen, but... I know, I know we got attorneys after us.
I do.
Thank God you don't have an actuary.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, but no, all in all, I think it's a, it's a good report, good results of operation, you know, fiscal year 18. And if we have any questions on that, I just tried to highlight what I thought was important in the financials.
So, what stands out to me is this excess deficiency before transfers.
Yep.
You know, last year we were $1,505,000, this year we're negative $136,000. Do you know what's driving that?
What's it doing?
It's on page 20.
Page 20. 20?
Yeah. It's a summary of the...
Okay. Yeah, this is...
I kind of did the differential on the columns and it seems like...
Yeah.
Public safety is a big part of this, maybe education, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and so, the differences that you see is that, one of the things that happened this year compared to last and as you go through, yeah, we had an excessive deficiency, $136,000, previous year's $1,536,000. A lot of that can come from, depending on how you spend, community preservation, if you spent more. This is a full accrual basis of accounting.
Right.
And so, most times you're not going to, and depending on, like, like you said, from a public works perspective, not that big of a change depending on what you had budgeted for that year. A lot of it has to do with how you spent your grants, what grants came in. And as you, as you see, and obviously the new implementation of the OPEB standards as you went through, that has, and usually what you're going to see in that, there's some big fluctuations on OPEB and on pensions. They try to go through a process that puts in deferred inflows and outflows to kind of smooth the changes, because if you took a look at a couple of years ago, say even on pensions, if we went back, so if I'm back at, what's the...
The statistical section?
Yeah. Okay, fine. Yeah, the, the weighted average return, money weighted average return, and that's part outside the component of pensions. In the previous year, you would have earned about 17% on your funds because the market went crazy. And so, that in effect lowered what was your net expense, because that's a component of expense. This year and last year, everybody was only have breaking even or having a small increase. So, those things are what causes a lot of these fluctuations. And then, what happens is the gap requires those amounts to be, in effect, amortized over a five-year period for all intents and purposes. So, say if you had a 17%, I'd make my analogy, you had a 20% rate of return one year last year. Well, what you would recognize is in one-fifth of that last year, so you have a gain, so you have deferred inflow, deferred outflow, and you would, in effect, over the next five years, take in 4% per year, you know, of all that, as you would be 20% of that. Same thing if you had a big loss, say if you had a change in land design or change in discount rate, that has the same effect that you take that particular loss over that period of time. So, the fluctuations, you try to minimize those as you go through. And what you, what you see is that sometimes you can have those particular elements change as part of that.
And it looks to like, so our grant income is down almost $800,000. And then, if you just look at program revenues, they're up $1,000,000. And program expenses are up $3,000,000. Go back in and try to figure out why, there's $800,000 in grant, there are grant revenues that, so that's, it's close to a million right there. And then you get the big pops and some of the, some of the department categories, huh?
The, but the other thing, so that if you, what happens every year is you also have an increase in your real estate as you go through, and that's your cover of what would be expected increases. Those usually, depending on how you budget, what you carry forward each year, have an effect on that bottom line and what carries forward from the beginning here to the end. What we've been finding in the last few years is that the OPEB, especially the OPEB once that was put in place and taking a look at the discount rate as it was before, what it is now. Every year you have a big change in even the blended rate, and that changes between the beginning and the end of the year. And that's compared to actual, and as you go through that, it's like, what's the difference between, I expected to receive 4%, we got in 0, so that's a loss that I have on that. But previous year I had a 17% gain and I was expecting 4%.
So, where's that get booked in the financial statements?
That gets booked as a net expense, and so the way they do it is saying, guy, you've got a total OPEB liability, which the actuary figures out based on your census data, reads up the ages, the age, this is what we have as planned benefits and the committee's, et cetera, as you go through, so this is what you're offering. They come up with a total pension liability, and then that is obviously, if that was the only thing you had, there's an increase, usually there's been an increase, an expected increase in the expense, because your liability is going up because you're not putting any money aside. So, who has to fund it, basically? As those employees are earning benefits this year, you have an increase. And as people, and as you're paying the current retirees, the liability goes down. People pass away, liability goes away for that particular, but usually someone else is coming on board. So, if you have an increase in the number of employees, there are a lot of factors that include it, included in that. And then what happens is that you can set money aside into your OPEB trust. However, as you set money aside in your OPEB trust, two things happen. One, you get credit for what's in the OPEB trust, so last year you contributed $350,000. hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's like, okay, so my OPEP trust went up by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, my net position went up by three fifty plus investment earnings, that's going to be subtracted against the net expenses, you put those two together. However, you really didn't do anything except for have an expense in your general fund for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So your net position in your general fund went down by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars because you contributed to, in effect, yeah, a trust fund for that. You cannot, in effect, liquidate that and send that back to the general fund. So you really didn't do anything except for, in effect, maybe increase your discount rate, because now you have a funding plan in place. But from a standpoint, you're going to expect these liabilities and the expenses to go up each year, and there's other factors that also relate to that OPEP. You also have to take a look at your medical trend rates. What was your medical trend rate last year? This year you're using an eight percent. You expect medical expenses to go up eight percent per year.
We just got our, our rates are going down, Mike.
Right, but on your actuarial valuation.
Oh, wow.
Okay? And that's where, as the new valuation comes out, again, this is, this is not a one-year look at, you know, you're looking at eight percent, not from a short-term perspective. They're looking at, building their tables based on the total payment life of that. So if you have, you know, a twenty-five-year-old employee who's going to retire from here, well, guess what? They've got forty years to retire, and once they retire, they might live, you know, another twenty-five years, so all of a sudden you've got a sixty-five-year payment life on that. So the rates they're using is trying to look at that over that period of time. So the short-term volatility is where you take a look at. We thought it was going to be eight, but it was only four, or it was minus, and that will, that will, in effect, reduce the expenses. It's not a simple thing to look at. That's complicated from that standpoint, but most of the expenses and the changes that we see between years is not a budgetary function, it's really the accruals that are, and these are the two biggest accruals, that have a lot of volatility in them. If you want, I can dig in deeper and get back to you with a better...
No, it's, I mean, I think I know what's going on here, so...
Yeah. But if you go year to year with your budget, your budget might go up, but you raise revenues to support that. You've got a balanced budget. The only thing that would reduce your budget in any year was if you, in effect, didn't meet your budget projections, had a bad snow and ice year, you had to use that, or you voted to use free cash to support the current operation. In effect, you're budgeting a loss for the year, so you expect a loss from that standpoint.
It looks like everything outside of the appropriated budget might have gone down a little bit.
Yeah, and so, and some of these, and some of them, from a special revenue standpoint, community preservation, you get revenues every year for community preservation, that which you tax, and that's which comes in from the state. Well, do you have a consistent expenditure in community preservation each year?
No.
No, and so that's, that's a self-funded, it's not a grant that you get, you're getting a piece of it in as a grant, but you're getting revenues in there, and that has an effect on each year. So in community preservation, you spent more than you did the previous year, you would expect a decrease in your net position, okay? However, when you get the full accrual, then when you have a decrease in your net position here, you're also, you should be capitalizing assets to build up your capital assets, and so it's a, you know, this, these particular financial statements have three different bases of accounting in there, and that's why a lot of people find them as completely confusing, because you have, you know, there's a governmental accounting standard for it, there's a financial accounting standard for it. Well, if the rules were the same for the private sector as they are for governments, you wouldn't need two forms, because everybody have the same rules. Different measurement focus, the full accrual statements, if you took a look at your full accrual statements and you took a look at these unfunded liabilities, sixty million dollars, I was talking to the community the other day, that had, you know, three hundred and seventy million dollars of unfunded liability, and a businessman was talking about it, said this makes no sense, we should, he said, you have a triple A rated community. If you took these same financial statements, you put them in the private sector, they'd be junk ones, and it's not legal not to fund, you know, the ERISA rules, et cetera, to fund these particular liabilities. The difference in the government, the way they look at it, especially from the discount rate, is that the town of Cohasset should be around a hundred years from now. It's illegal to go bankrupt, you know, to go bankrupt in Massachusetts at this one time. You will not fall, even if you did, you might have different priorities to how you spend your money, but the risk of payment to your retirees is minimal. Even if you don't hit the seven and a half percent rate or the four percent rate, the burden shifts back to the town, so you might have to say, all right, we cannot provide all of the services because of the way we're structured. And so that's why you have a little different perspective. Most governments would be out of business with these type of liabilities unfunded if you were a business. And you couldn't do that, you'd have to use a risk-free rate in the commercial sector for any of these liabilities, because you can't shift the burden to the employees with a, you know, with the plan that you have in place. With businesses, then they change to 401Ks, as opposed to, you know, a defined benefit to a defined contribution. You couldn't have a defined benefit plan that has a six percent funded rate, okay? That just wouldn't be allowed, and it's not legal to do that. For governments, they are, and so it's kind of a, you can still be a triple A rated community with these huge unfunded liabilities, because you have a plan in place. To do that, the OPEP is not a legal requirement, the pensions is. Any other questions?
We don't want to know that, Steve.
Yep.
At the same time, most people go Medicare, they just...
Right.
Did the agent make a drop down in your open liability protection draw? Have you done any covering, knowledge around lowering Medicare or the open liability?
The actuaries usually are the ones that do that as we go through, we take a look at what most places do, but what we've found, exactly what you said, it's more people that you can shift to another plan, there is a dramatic change. The other thing is obviously the contribution rate, you know, and what you offer, and, you know, the plans obviously that you offer as part of that, is the ways to do that. The only other way to do it is to, in effect, fund at a more aggressive level, which will then change your discount rate, which will lower your liability. If you take a look inside of the financials, there's a sensitivity analysis for the discount rate and for the medical trend rate, and what you'll find is, you'll find it feel like a twenty-five percent shift between the liability if your discount rate went up or down by one percent. So if you think that that rate is a little bit too high or too low, you have the ability to analyze that and make that change. We look for, is it reasonable, is it also in line with what the trend is in terms of... Right, and we also take a look at your investment strategy. Unless you invest in a man that's going to achieve that particular rate for what you're doing, then you cannot use a higher rate, because the investment strategy needs to match what you use as your discount rate.
We're going to have the OPEP committee do a presentation to us soon, and have, we've tested a lot of that, those assumptions, and played with various things in terms of retirement age, in terms of contribution, and all that jazz.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the auditors?
Just one quick one, a full-time equivalent, can you just give me the definition of that as an employee?
As an employee, somebody that is working, I think it's just full-time, and I forget how many hours a week, but it's a full-time, and so if you have two part timers, again, when you're looking at a full-time equivalent, for pensions, are you eligible to receive pensions? And so the standard is like, if you're working over twenty-four hours, all right, you can get a pension. Obviously, it's going to be less, but if you had two part timers, that would be one full-time equivalent as you go through the census data, that's what you... OPEP's the same thing, if you had a full-time equivalent, trust and any of, one of the things that's different for the OPEP standard is that pension is based on, you know, liability is a function of time, age, and salary, pensionable salary. OPEP is time, age, so if you made two hundred thousand dollars a year or twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and you worked and were able to retire, you can get that. The other thing with OPEP, and you're probably going to go through this, is the state had looked at changing some of the laws to have a more of a vesting schedule in there. So if you worked your ten years and were eligible for retirement, and you just waited till you hit retirement age and you're getting nothing as a pension, you get the same benefit as somebody that put forty years of service into the town.
Right.
Right, which, from the pension standpoint, they factor that in, age, time of service, and so all of a sudden you get a, you know, a nine percent pension for working that ten years, of the total of the maximum of eighty, but for getting the same benefit. And so there was talk about raising the ten years with OPEP to twenty. It kind of fell out of legislature and the committees a few years ago, and it was...
It was a watching year, I think.
Yeah, so it came close.
It started two years.
Yeah, but there's actually another push on there by a couple of the MTF O A people. I did a presentation on that, at the trade show for the municipal on that.
Yeah.
Actually, a lot of people came.
Surprise.
Yes.
Surprise.
And, but one of the people that came was one of the ones that was really, one of the treasures out there, and he's pushing that for years, and he's trying to re-engage the legislature to support, in effect, a vesting schedule.
So I'm just going to follow one of your questions. So when I'm, when I'm looking at, in this case, in the CAPR, page one twenty-two, full-time equivalent to count employment function, and I'm looking at a...
Oh, okay, for that schedule as opposed to...
Yeah, but if I'm looking at a number by department, am I effectively looking at a discrete headcount?
Yeah.
If in the department it says fifty, then it might be seventy-five, but it's fifty...
Seventy-five, it's fifty full-time equivalents as we go through. That's the, in the statistical section, that's, that's a table put together by the town. That's unaudited numbers, the statistical section. So we look at it just from the standpoint, does it make sense year to year? It should be part of, sometimes it's part of your town report as you go through, but that should be an accurate representation of full-time equivalents. It's also requiring as part of the schedule, and it's a little bit the state every year to put in the number of employees of full-time equivalents. So it's a good estimate, but by department, you can, it should be, you know, two part timers would be a full-time.
Okay, all right.
And they might not be. I'm sorry, as I said, the OPEP and the rest of that, same type of information's in the OPEP and that from...
No, you used to follow information, but that answers my question, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't see here in your, in your report here, where you make the statement that the financial, the financial document here, the firm's financial annual report is prepared, um, generally, under the general...
If you went to the other report, you're looking at the minimum.
Right, so where is that?
That is on page thirteen and fourteen of the big reports.
Right, I was looking at that quickly. Do you make a statement here that this, our financial report was made in accordance with...
Yeah, and page thirteen, opinions, that's where we have multiple opinions based on each opinion you, in our opinion, the financial statement referred to above present failure in all material respective, respected financial position of the government activities, business activities each may have a fund, the aggregate, aggregated made of funded information of the town by accident, as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable there are, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States.
Okay, so is your opinion there?
It is our opinion, not evidence.
Okay, I would love to move on unless anybody has any other questions for the auditors.
No.
All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
That could be all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Yep.
Okay, thank you again for being patient. We're gonna now turn to the, we have four citizens petitions, and we're going to have presentations from the, from the proponents of those, and we're going to start with the electric filling aggregation. I just want to also note that we have some members of the advisory board out there, so hello, and thank you for joining us.
Are they coming into session with us?
They're not coming into session, no. So I'm going to ask you to sit down and introduce yourself and address for the record.
Hi, and I'm Steve Penner, I live at one ninety-five Old Street in Cohasset.
And Steve, I, I'm going to queue this up just a little bit. We discussed this, this general proposal last week...
Right.
For consideration for the board of selectmen, put it in as a warrant article on our own. We haven't deliberated on that, nor will we tonight, but we want you to have this opportunity, because it's also, will be on the warrant as a citizen's petition, should the board decide not to put it into the body of the warrant, to not endorse it as kind of our articles. So I turn it over to you.
Okay. First of all, I'm here as representing a citizen through the Cohasset residential climate action. I just want to mention that as also a member of the alternative energy committee, I'm delighted to see that the audit report has a, has a photo of the solar array, the landfill on the cover. I think that's wonderful.
I did that just for you, yes.
That's so great. So anyways, this petition advocates for an article on a warrant to get what's called aggregated electricity contract for Cohasset. Now, this is a multi-stage process. What this is, is a, using the power of bulk purchasing to create a pool of residents that will be attracted to energy generators, so that they'll offer a very good rate on the power for residents and businesses in Cohasset. The municipal facilities can join also if they wish in this article. So this is a kind of a long process, there's many steps, and this first step is very limited in scope. All it does is invoke the Utility Restructuring Act of nineteen ninety-seven to authorize you guys, the board of selectmen, and the town manager or their designate, to investigate and propose a plan for aggregation. Now, that doesn't mean that the town would go through with it, it's just to develop a plan, and then after the plan is developed, with, with the advice and assistance of the Department of Energy Resources, and there's many other sources of help we can get in preparing a plan. After doing that, it would go back to the voters of Cohasset to, at a future town meeting, hopefully in the fall, to decide whether they would like to see the plan implemented. So the residents will get two chances to vote on whether they think this is a good idea. And then if, if, if this current article passes and the next one passes to implement the plan, then, at that point, then RFPs would go out to energy providers and get bids back and evaluate them, and if everything was good to us, then residents would be notified, and they would have a choice, so they would be automatically enrolled in unless they decided to opt out. The exception would be is if residents already had a contract for electricity through a third-party supplier, not just through the default one, that national grid procurer is for them, but if they had another contract. Then, if they wanted to participate, they would, they would have to take it upon themselves to cancel the contract and then enroll. But if they, if a resident just had the default utility service and had not engaged a third-party for power, they would be automatically enrolled unless they opted out. And a big part of the plan would be how we're going to notify all of the residents and give them adequate time and information to make a decision as to whether they wanted to participate in the program or not. So that's basically what it is. Now, when we met last week, you guys requested that I give you a frequently asked question document, so I put that... document, so I put that together. I don't, did you get that? So I think that's pretty thorough. There's two sections to it. The first section is kind of directed to you guys as to do more with the article than with aggregation itself. In the second part, I took mostly from another town's frequently asked question list that they had distributed to the citizens of the town. And that answers questions that are more directly relevant to electricity customers. Anyways, I'm not sure how you'd like me to proceed, but maybe I should just answer questions.
Yeah, I'd like to turn it over to selectmen for questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, first question, Steve, is the proposal has the town, assuming it's passed, the town developing a plan, but it seems, again, it brings up the question we had last week, it seems that one element of the plan is prescribed, and that is that you're automatically opted in as opposed to...
Right, you're automatically enrolled in the plan unless you opt out. That's a state law requirement.
Okay. And the second part of that is, as a follow-on, one of the things you pointed out is that that would require a communication with residents.
Right.
But that's not one time only?
No, we, by state law, there only has to be one, but we want to have at least two chances to communicate with everybody in town.
Well, I would think it would actually have to be annual because you've got housing transactions and purchases and sales of new residents. And so as a result, that would have to be ongoing, right? You couldn't anticipate that a new person moving into town would be automatically enrolled and never told.
Yes, that's right. You're, yes, yes. So that would be a part of the plan, how we're gonna manage that.
Right, okay. How do you think?
Jeff, your question?
Yeah, what other towns in the South Shore are on this program?
Let's see, on the South Shore. Well, I can tell you that the first group of towns that did this was the Cape Compact, I think they called it. And virtually all the towns on the Cape and the islands went together and got a group aggregation contract. Now, other than that, I don't know. Our neighboring towns, of course, you know, Hall and Hingham are munis, so they wouldn't, just wouldn't be applicable to them. I can tell you that Situate, they passed a similar article last fall at town meeting, so they're gonna proceed with this. Marshfield is at the same stage we are now. They have a citizen's petition and they're gonna go, you know, to town hall with that. I know that Hannah, we're considered some years ago, I'm told by our town planner, but they didn't proceed with it, I guess. Now, I don't know, so there are 134, 136 towns at least in Massachusetts that have gone through the process and got approved aggregation plans. There are those, one thing I think is, they've almost all saved their residents money. But what I think is really significant is that of the, there are 56 of those towns that offered an option for 100% renewable energy, which is the motivation of the citizens group here doing this. And 80% of those towns actually got an option for 100% renewable energy at a rate that was less than the base rate of the utility. So there's really a huge potential here for...
So besides the Cape, nobody else on the South Shore has done this? There's a couple of people in the works and thinking about it? Anyone say no?
Yeah, there are, there are a bunch of towns around Boston, the metropolitan area, but I don't know any...
Kingston?
Oh, well, you call, no, Marshfield and, not Marshfield...
You said Kingston?
Yeah, Kingston and Plymouth. Plymouth has gone into this sort of thing in a big way.
Can you give it on the, the first that was presented?
Plymouth, right, right. We had a, we had a presentation from, from Plymouth. We had their energy manager and we had the energy broker came and gave a presentation to Alternative Energy. Yes, so I guess that's a South Shore, Plymouth.
Yep.
Well, it's a South Shore.
Just, I have a couple of questions, hold it down, and you have another one?
Yes.
One of the things in the, in the article language mentions to go in acting alone or in concert with a group of other municipalities.
Right.
So in other words, we could actually, potentially, eventually negotiate with, do we have to be adjacent to those towns?
No, no.
So we could bundle our electable needs with another town that's doing the same thing?
Right, right. Well, for instance, it's conceivable that we could go in with Marshfield's that can do it, or even Situate.
Right.
The Situate's a little bit ahead of us, but we could do that.
Aggregating within the town and potentially with other towns.
Right. Often that will give you an advantage because there's a larger pool of customers to offer the generators. Sometimes it doesn't. It depends, you have to have towns that are kind of similar in type. It wouldn't be good to match an industrial type of town with a, you know, residential type of town. You would not, that would not work out very well. But if you had two, you know, another town like, similar to Cohasset with a commercial but not much industrial or any industrial in, my guess is that you'd be able to get a better rate by doing that. And I would think we would definitely want to investigate joining with Situate or Marshfield.
Another question I have, which might be more of a governmental question, but why does this need town meeting action? Just for the process of...
This is by state law.
Investigating, okay.
By state law, we have to, town governance, which means a town meeting, has to authorize the board of selectmen to proceed.
To even just look into this, so it's something...
Even look into it, right, right. That's state law.
Anybody call the town?
Does it call, does it call for expenditure of the town?
No.
No, no funds?
No. We may decide that we would like to engage an energy broker, but there wouldn't be any expense to the town for doing that because they're paid by it. Usually it's a one mil charge per kilowatt hour.
So if the town approved this, we'd get a report back that we would consider if we wanted to go to the next step of all meetings?
Yeah, yeah. Now, according to the state law, it could be left up to the board of selectmen to decide whether to go to the next stage and actually implement the plan. But we decided, we decided as a citizens group and also with the Alternative Energy Committee, that we wanted to, we wanted to do, go the extra mile there and give residents, voters, a second chance to consider where they want to go forward. So we didn't decide to leave it up to the board of selectmen, you guys. We decided also ask the citizens where they want to go. And then even if, even if it passed there and then we went out bids, you know, issued the RFPs and got the bids back, if the bid didn't look good to us, there's no obligation to proceed beyond that point. And it's unlikely that that would happen. I don't know if it's ever happened, but if we got back bids and for some, whatever reason they weren't attractive to us, there's no obligation to proceed beyond that point.
And by the way, the procurement would still go through you or your charges?
Well, there'd be a public procurement.
Yeah, right. Steve?
The only, the question that I have, which is a follow-on to this, is effectively we're putting together a binding group, and one primary difference is that it's under the auspices of state law, which mandates that citizens opt in.
Right.
Okay. Why wouldn't we do this?
They're opt, I'm sorry, they, no, they're automatically enrolled unless they opt out.
You're right, it's negative consent.
Right.
Right? And so my question is, why wouldn't we look at doing this independent of state law?
The reason, oh, independent of state law, I don't think we'd have, the town had the authority to do it independently of state law.
Well, again, brought to town meeting, the town, the town participants, sorry, participants at town meeting could authorize the town to investigate such a thing.
Well, but of course, the reason that in 1997, the state wrote the law that way was to make it more attractive to energy generators to want to bid on a contract because they would have, it'd be more predictable for them to know, you know, estimate how many customers they'd be able to get. When you have the automatic enrollment, you have, you normally have a very high enrollment rate. And so you'd get a better, you'd get a better, better kilowatt hour rate on your electricity by going that way. Now, if somebody, so it's very important that we, we don't wanna surprise anybody. Everybody's gotta be notified and know about this. And if in spite of all this, they get on the program and then decide they don't like it, that's okay. They can, they can cancel their, cancel the program at any time they want with no penalty. So there's no, there's no downside to it. If a resident says, oh gee, I don't want government telling me that I should, you know, make this offer to me, they could say they don't want it, you know, at any time with no penalty. The only downside for them is if they later decide, oh gee, my neighbor's getting a better rate than I am here because they're in the aggregation plan. If they wanna go back in, there's no guarantee they'd get the same rate that was contracted, you see. That's only fair, you know. So it's really, it's really increasing the choice for the residents, and they'll have every opportunity to evaluate it, and if they, somehow they're on vacation for two months over the period where, where all the notices go out and they miss it, and they're unhappy, they just drop out, that's all.
No, I understand that. Remember, and I remember, that this is a community that will recognize where, what the phone number is to the next vacation spot, but not recognize that they license their dog. They're shocked, shocked, I tell you, when they realize that their beach sticker has run out. You know, simple but very important things escape them. And that's why I was asking you about the notification process. This is one of those areas where frankly, the infrastructure doesn't currently exist within the town to go on an annual notification process, and so I'm simply concerned about that.
Well, normally, the notification of residents is handled by the bidder. You know, they voter rolls, I guess, and, well, the town sends out the notices about the town meetings to every, all the voters in town, right?
Right, but they, again, what I'm, what I'm describing is the fact that we do have turnover in order to...
Yeah, I know, so, yeah, I, I understand, I hadn't heard that question asked before, but yes, you're right, there would have to be some way to notify new residents every year.
I wanna kind of move us along. I know Paul has some...
Okay, I'm done with my question.
And I think that's something we have to, one, an initiation phase.
I'll have to add your, I'll have to add that question to the frequently asked question list.
Some maybe just when you go to sign up for the bill when you move a new house, it has on there, you want...
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah, right. If your new resident moving in, you have to sign up for electric service right then, you'd be notified. So, yeah, you wouldn't have to have a mass mailing or anything.
Some of the towns, Rockland, Plymouth, Millis, there's a whole bunch. A lot of these are in the western end of the state because in the northern end of the state, it's hard to expense for electricity costs, electricity costs. Eastern end of the state, there's not as many, you know, there's a whole bunch you're getting ready to...
Oh, you got them, they come up great?
Bedford, Millis, Rockland, Stonehampton, Gloucester, Hamilton are already on board in West, Winchester, Sudbury, Sunbridge, Brookline, Arlington, Devon. But there's a whole bunch in the western end of the state. The western end of the state has a much higher cost for electricity, and they have saved a tremendous amount of mass electric, which is the old companies out there, very high rates. And if you go further east, it's cheaper electrical cost. And that's one of the places where you'll see a lot more of the communities that are involved. It's a little regional. I know a couple in the western end of the state have combined municipalities for the purpose of purchasing, so it's not unusual to fill a town, and it's, it does save just a mass volume of buying the hours for a fairly extensive amount, you know, lot, right?
Yeah, but you...
It's gonna bump it up to 15%.
There were studies by University of New Hampshire to study the program in Massachusetts, and also the University of Massachusetts did another study, and they both agree that residents have saved money, not a lot of money, but a little money, but also this green, the green electricity aggregation has been a big success too. They've been able to increase the amount of renewable energy in the mix of power.
And this only is for the execution of a plan. This is not...
Right, this, this article is just, is just to investigate and come up with a plan.
What's available. We have a whole bunch of communities that are similar to ours or not, and we know how they...
Right. So there are, there are a bunch of steps to the process.
This is the first step.
This is the first step, and the second step would be after the plan, come back to town meeting and residents, where they want to implement.
This is just to see if we can look at options that are out there.
Right. And then even if they voted to implement and if we went out to RFP, got bids back and didn't like them...
Sure, say no.
Just say no.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I have.
All right, we're good? All right, thank you, Steve, again.
Diane, I have a question.
Okay.
Diane?
Yep.
I'm Mike Dick, 27 Parker Avenue, I'm on the advisory board. Could you talk a little bit about what the obligations are for the town and the town manager to administer this program? You know, you alluded to communication program, you said something about the bidder would handle it, but then it seems like you also need the county handling it. And then who's watching the bidder? Does the town need to have a watchdog?
I think there has to be some town oversight, yes.
So how much overhead would be added to town operations to administer the program? Rob, just...
I don't really know, but you know, I've been in contact with people, been doing these programs in half a dozen other towns, and none of them indicated that the additional workload for town staff has been onerous. So I don't think it's a big deal, but you know, that is a consideration. I can't really tell you, the literature I've read and the people I've talked to say that it's really pretty minimal oversight, but there is some oversight that has been done. You know, like for the Green Communities Act or, you know, a lot of other programs, even if the money is coming from outside, there has to be some town oversight of these programs.
Steve, I think that Mike just brings up a good point in that these are the kinds of questions that you'll likely hear at town meetings. So to the extent that you're able to...
Okay, so I'll, I'll do my best to be prepared.
Provide answers for that, right. You know, I think that's what these public hearings are really good at, is kind of identifying, you know, people, where they take this information and what they're doing.
I'll try to talk to some town managers in other towns that have done this and see what they have to say about it.
And you have one more question there.
Anybody else with a question? You don't mind standing up and identifying yourself?
Mark Beck, Forestand here. Is the singular focus of this plan to lower rates?
Well, the original law passed in 1997, that was the intention. But in the last few years, more and more towns have been using this to increase the amount of renewable energy and reduce the carbon footprint in the town. So what's, and they kind of changed the name, they now call it the Green Electricity Aggregation, Community Choice Aggregation. So the way this would work is there would be a base default plan, which maybe would just have the minimal amount of renewable energy that's required by the state, which is now 14% of the generation that would be generated from Massachusetts wind farms and so forth. But, so that would be the minimum. And you know, every, every energy supplier has to provide, National Grid does, they all do. But the idea would be that, that we would have maybe two other options for people, to green up, get more renewable energy from Massachusetts, or maybe go for Texas wind farm renewable energy and have, you know, have, we'd have to decide, it'd be part of the plan, decide what kind of options, green up options to offer. But the motivation for the residents group that's sponsoring this is to actually get more renewable energy. But at the same time, we anticipate saving residents some money. That's kind of like the honey, you know, sweeten the pot, and if somebody's not interested in climate issues, maybe they'll spring, you know, they'll feel good about saving a little bit of money.
So somebody has to make the decision to say, we'll pay two cents kilowatt hour more to get 8% renewable.
Exactly, right, right. So...
But that's some, that's some body, not...
That would be one of the options, say maybe there'll be three, three options, a base option, a green up one, and then a premium... That, that would be one of the options. Maybe there'll be three, three options, a base option, a green up one, and then a premium green option to offer residents. And then every resident would have to decide what they wanted to do. If they did nothing, they would be automatically enrolled in the default lowest, um, level. If they, if they wanted to get more renewable energy, then they would, you know, check that box on their postcard and send it back and they would be enrolled in that.
They're automatically.
They'd be automatically, well, if they did nothing, they did not send the postcard back, they would be automatically enrolled in the default plan, the base plan. If they wanted more than that, if they wanted to.
So there's a lot of iteration of postcards.
No, 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 just one postcard.
Excuse me, I'm losing control of the meeting, it's my fault. So if you, I want the questions to come through me, Steve will answer them, but I don't want a back and forth conversation because we will devolve very quickly.
No, enrollment is very simple, that, that's the important point. It's, it's, it's very easy. One postcard, uh, that a customer has to read and send back if they want.
Great, thank you very much. And we'll be taking this topic up again on.
Thanks for your questions and I'll have to beep up my frequently asked question.
I know, it never ends. So, okay, um, next up is a citizen's petition to, for the release of a water easement, David Bigley. Could I give us your name and address for the record? Sit down, go back to the board.
David Bigley, twenty-five James Lane.
Bigley, wait, twenty-five James Lane.
Hi.
You have the petition in front of you.
We do have the petition, if you could sort of summarize it for everybody that's here.
Sure, uh, we live at twenty-five James Lane, our house faces James Lane. The original property that we, uh, fifteen years ago included the corner of Cushing and Pleasant. We have since subdivided that property and there's actually a house going up on that, uh, second piece. In the process of doing that subdivision, uh, because we hired such a competent and thorough engineer, we found that we had a, an easement across that property. We didn't even know that when we bought the property. Uh, so now it's this easement going across the property. We've been to the, the Water Commission, two or three meetings of the Water Commission. They have declared they have no use for it, but we, so that was our, hopefully, what we thought was going to be our easy route. Let's go. Water Department said, yeah, we don't need it anymore.
The end.
The end, but it isn't the end. It has to, because it is an easement, an actual, uh, deeded easement across the property, it's considered real property. And the, the Water Commission does not have the authority to, it has to be done by an act of town meeting. So that's where we are.
It hasn't been used.
Yes, it's, it's, the, uh, the water, well, you notice, if you'll notice, the last wording of the, uh, of the petition is that we, part of it is that we agree, as, as the owners of the property, is that we will cut and cap this pipe at the street levels of both sides. That's part that's written in there and that's our commitment to do that. But it also says, if it exists.
All right.
They don't even know that there's a pipe there, never mind that they have a use for it. They don't even know if it's there. So this is really just trying to clean this up, you know, get this off of there so that, uh, it's, uh, not encumbering that piece of property.
So Chris, just from our point of view, so the town has the easement where they own it, their property. So we put, quit, equipment theoretically underneath there, like a paper. And this is the only way to get rid of that, release them from.
The, the only town meeting has the authority to accept and release easements.
Easement, right, okay.
And look, again, the Water Department has set up more than one occasion to. If there is a pipe there, we have no use for it.
We wish you had something, I don't have any writing from them. We should have something in writing, especially an engineer, so it's good to go.
I, I should have.
That's why we're here.
So have you looked in the, um, maps in town hall if there's a place that exists there? That may potentially access water or property for.
We have not been able to find the pipe, uh, in, on any maps without the easement. But not the actual, uh, statement that says that a pipe was actually made there.
So this would allow somebody even, this would allow someone to, to build on that property, is that something?
Yeah, so it's a clear piece of property and right now it, it technically cannot be built on.
Because it's an easement.
Because there's an easement.
On, on that lot.
On the lot, not on that particular portion. Right, it's like a twelve foot easement. So it goes from, it goes from James Lane to Pleasant Street across the property.
So whoever's building whatever, their house or something.
No, they have avoided that.
They've avoided it?
Specifically building on it, it's going right.
So who owns that property now? Is it still you or them?
The, uh, the second lot, there's a house being built.
Where, where does easement is that?
Yeah, we've sold it to Maxell, I think Maxell, I think it's Maxell.
Marvell.
Uh, and it's, they own it.
So you don't own the property anymore?
Well, we own our portion, but.
The easement runs through both parcels, their parcel and the parcel that they divided and sold off.
Okay, so I was wondering why that other party was getting this. Are they on the list?
Oh yeah, it's on there, it goes through thirty Pleasant Street, uh, twenty-five James Lane.
Okay, it would seem to me that we, we just, sounds interesting, we, we need to hip in the Water Department on this.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think, I think, do we need to ask for them to vote on this as well, so we see they'll vote on this?
It would probably be.
I, I think we need to first start at town hall, you know, whether we have some kind of engineering maps or some kind of other information that would show us what's there. And then if it is indeed a water pipe or water asset, which is still under the town, that, then we can ask them to opine on it and basically kind of sign off on it. But I think we need to know what town property exists underneath that land.
And to do that, but we also need to know what the Water Department's.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
And their vote.
Will you do that? Do you want us to go?
No, we'll, Chris will know it. I mean, the way this should have been done, it should have been uncovered before the house got built, right? I mean, and we should have had an opportunity to take a look at it.
It will follow.
Any other questions before I go?
So has this reached the stage where it's going to be on the warrant anyway, so what?
It's a citizen's petition, yes.
So it's, it's qualified language wise and all of that?
Oh yes.
So our, our goal here is a question of evaluating and giving our opinion. We're going to want to report and we're going to want to vote from the Water Department.
If you recommend it or not, okay. Somebody in the audience?
John Chapman, one hundred twenty-three, eighteen, this is actually, I guess, more a follow up on that. The question that arises in my mind is, an easement from point X to point Y, well, what about W to X and Y to Z? Is there something else that you have a question for?
Yeah, I think we need to understand what it is so that we.
Is it just from the well up Pleasant Street and tying into something, or was it? Right, there are other easements out there we don't know about. Right.
Well, in the investigation of this, when we subdivided the property, this was the only easement that came up. And it didn't spring, um, easement that just goes from, uh, from James Lane to Pleasant Street. So I don't know what that's anymore. I guess, you never know.
Okay, Chris, do you have enough direction from us?
Yeah.
Okay, get more information. Um, but all of these citizen's petitions, just for all of you that may not know this, they automatically are on the warrant in this form that was presented to us. Um, our role, um, and advisory committee's role ultimately will be to make a recommendation at town meeting on it. So we'll get a little more due diligence on our end and thank you.
So we can't, you can't make a recommendation tonight?
No.
Do, do we get back on the agenda to, for to hear your recommendation?
Yes, yes. Well, what we usually do is if there are other boards that are either making recommendations and in this case it would be the advisory board, once they've had a chance to opine, we will listen to their point of view. We will deliberate and then we'll come up with a recommendation. Or not. And, um, and then we'll obviously ask our town manager to make sure before we do that, that we have the information that we need.
Okay.
If there's any more that we can provide, please.
We know where to find it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next one is a conservation, uh, citizen's petition for a conservation restriction for two parcels of land on Beach Street. Anybody else? Introduce yourself and name the address.
Hi, I'm Jeff Walt, thirty-six Old Castor Road, and the director of the Cohasset Conservation Trust. Katie Foden.
Seventy-nine Northwood Grove, I'm also director of the Cohasset Conservation Trust and a member of the open space.
Um, as a, as a means of background, Conservation Trust owns about twenty properties in the town of Cohasset, totaling more than two hundred acres. And the reason that we exist is to protect the open space in the town and provide passive recreation for the community. One of the parcels that we own is called Sumner Smith Overlook, which is on Beach Street. Um, if you've driven down Beach Street, you may have, um, seen our sign that talks about it. It's a, it's a small one acre parcel, goes up to the top of the ledge and it provides some overlook to, um, Little Harbor and the Atlantic Ocean.
Which, which one's this?
C C T.
This property?
This property.
That's the one you're talking about?
Yes.
And you, you own that?
We own that.
And it's about an acre?
Yeah.
There's a trail on it, it goes up to a hill.
It was equated to us by Sumner Smith and him as well. Um, next to, next to Sumner Smith property are two town owned parcels of land. Town has owned them for quite some time. And we were thinking that, um, last, last December, at special town meeting, um, Beach Street was one of the streets that was named for the scenic roadways. And to help maintain the natural beauty of that street, um, it would be a good idea to put conservation restriction on those two parcels. Tying, so tying all those three together, Sumner Smith Overlook plus two, two town parcels, would just create a nice natural area in town to, when people go down Peach Street, create some additional trails, um, a place where, where people could enjoy, enjoy the environment.
Are these, um, I, I think I'm reading this right, there's some wetlands on this one?
Yes.
On, on one of them?
Yes.
But they're areas that could be trailed, you know, and interconnected?
Yes.
And then the, the, the house that's right here? Looks like it's right next to the C C T Smith property. Is that a home? One thirty-one?
Yes, that's a home. Yep.
Can you say who lives there? Do you know who lives there?
No.
Okay, all right. Only just because I'm trying to place exactly where Beach Street is.
That's the, uh, the big parcel behind it is where the, um, Chris Feld is.
Okay. Oh, okay, I know exactly where it is then, yeah. I know who lives in one of them, yeah, okay.
Okay. There's a green, um, C C T sign on the road, so, um, if you drive by, you'll be able to notice that sign and that'll give you a sense.
Okay. Now, we had, um, we had talked about these lots before and if I, I want to ask Chris about, there's one of them that we do not have clear title on, is that right? Or can you lay that?
So there's two lots here, uh, and for the purposes of, I guess, this one is more easterly than the other, I guess, is that a best way to, uh, okay, yeah. The, the more easterly, they all came from, from a, a, a large parcel at one point that was a farm or something. The more easterly lot, the one that's immediately adjacent to the, the Smith overlooking it, um, is clean from our records. The one that's just adjacent to that is not. So we're, we've been exploring the, the title history on that. It does appear to be owned by the town, but how it became owned by the town, we're not entirely sure. Um, so we've, we have a, our law firm that does environmental and, you know, land use work, has a clerk who's, you know, going to be digging and, uh, but at this point, we, we know that, that the, again, the more easterly one is clean. We have a clear, I forget how the town acquired that, but we, we know the history of that. The ones adjacent to that were just a little more fuzzy. It's, it seems to be in town ownership. Um, and it seems to have been for some time. We just don't have the whole history.
Could there possibly be something that, I don't know, because of the wetlands there, that it's in like some other?
Uh, yeah, I, I, to my knowledge, neither of those are buildable lots under the town zoning code.
Right.
Because I did ask at one point, you know, what was out there that has any value? You know, and you think Beach Street, you know, you're like, oh.
Right.
But it, but it was, it didn't, apparently it didn't need zoning, uh, from what I was told. So it hasn't been on my radar, except that we've been looking into, you know, how the title is on one of those.
So let me just pose a question and then I'll, um, hear from the other members of the board, but this citizen's petition, if, if we don't get an answer to the title on that particular parcel, can we take action on it? I mean.
I have to ask council.
Right, could we remove that or can there be an amendment to a citizen's petition on the floor?
You can't always amend something on the floor, yeah.
Components?
I remembered also, this does have the, the, the catch on line, or take any other action relative there too. So if, if one, so I'm going to give you, have council account on that.
Wouldn't be our action to take, but I'm just saying, if something's unclear and we don't have a clear title on it.
Right.
Probably not legal to proceed, but, but we'll get advice on that.
One of the parcels, at least one of the parcels has taken that.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if that affects whether or not you have a view.
And that may be one of the complicating issues here, really. And, and, you know, the town historically didn't know it was the best job.
Exactly.
On stuff that no one was going to do anything with, so, uh, sometimes you have to go painstakingly recreate what happened. So I think one of them may have actually been needed or scrapped, that's the one that's immediately adjacent to your. The, the clean one, I think, is the one that's adjacent to your property. Um, and again, I, I don't know if that was needed to the town or, or why, but it, the town has it. But, I, I'm already said that, I don't have to repeat what I said.
All right. Any selectmen?
So what is this? Is this a law that if we, the town votes to put us in under a conservation restriction, why isn't it held by the town? Is it, is it by the law, if, if, like, nonprofit trust? Is that the way this works?
It goes to, to, excuse, to, uh, conservation restriction is given either to the town by a private party such as us or the town gives it to a conservation organization such as us. But the, the, the group that owns the conservation restriction is oversees the property to make sure that it's held for conservation purposes.
So it might be, if the town did this, it might be their motivation to turn it over to you folks for ninety-nine years so that you folks would be responsible for taking care of it, that are reasons to do that?
Yeah.
Paul, turn them on?
No.
Steve?
Um, the, I have questions for you, Chris, but likewise, let me just come back here for a second. You were originally talking, I, I'm, I'm assuming that you were thinking in generalities that this might be, um, uh, if this were to pass, this, this might be connected trails to the Smith property.
Yes.
So where would people park?
The whole area would be the park.
No, no, where would people park?
Oh, would, would, park.
Right.
Um, they would park at town hall. There are a lot of people that walk on Peach Street.
Popular walking.
Yeah.
Park at town hall, okay. So that's a, and, and that, that is just by rough estimate, I'd say at least six hundred yards or, or, or better than a quarter of a mile. Right, um, and, say that again?
I do that, that's my walk. I park at the town hall and.
Yeah, no, it's a fair, I, I'm, I'm.
Not one of the town business lots.
The other question I have, this is for Chris. While these are not currently buildable lots, do they hold value to the town in any other way?
Uh, potentially. Uh, I mean, you know, land all, land has intrinsic value anyway. Um, whether, uh, you haven't actually explored to combine them if they're buildable. I haven't, you know, I don't know if there's any restrictions on either one of them, you know. If it was donated, it was a bad restriction. But, you know, land has potential, always has some potential value. It always have, uh, it. One of the things that the treasure collector tries to do in what is called land of low value is to maybe attach it to a neighboring parcel if it doesn't have some other, you know, value, so that it goes back on the tax rules. Because if it's town owned, it's on the tax rules.
Right, I'm just, that's the question. Does it unlock taxable valuation to the town in some other way?
Well, there's multiple ways. Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Quick, is it feasible to put either parking there or bicycle parking? Just something so that someone would get there other than walking from town hall? Or is that not a feasible thing to do?
I don't know, I guess you could look at it.
No, I think if you look at the easternmost property, which is the one that's closest to the Smith property, or even the Smith property, you could definitely put bicycle parking. The Smith parcel is bounded by a stone wall with an opening on Beach Street and then ledge. So you could put bicycle parking inside the stone wall very easily, because it's flat at the beginning before it goes up to the top of the ledge.
Yeah, if we were to do this, I would, I would be very opposed to any kind of car parking. I think that's kind of not the point. Viper acts or something, I think we'd be irresponsible and probably something we should talk to the board at some time about, if we're ever around town, but... John, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up Steve's question, perhaps request if you consider doing a more formal appraisal or valuation of it. I think it'd be relatively short money, and I know its question's going to come up when we meet on it. I suspect it's one people will ask at town meeting.
With a kind of asterisk that, again, we may not be able to get, we may not even be able to identify a title on the first of the western north parcel.
Right, but I think it would be better than sort of speculating, just sort of get those facts out and a third-party independent opinion on that. Go along with that.
Paul, do you have a question?
Paul Carlson, 82 Little Lake Farm, also a member of the advisory committee. Would it be possible to ask the petitioners to put some red ribbons or something to indicate, at least from Beach Street, where we're talking about? I don't know where the Sumner property ends and where the other two begin and end. Is that something they could consider?
Yeah, we can do that. Right now, if you could go down Beach Street, you would see the green sign that says, "The Sumner Smith Overlook." And as I just mentioned, that property is bounded by a stone wall. You can see the stone wall that is perpendicular to Beach Street. That's the boundary between our property and the town-owned property. So that's the beginning at one side of it.
And you may not be able to mark parcel east, parcel west.
No, but we can measure it.
But you can just generally? All right, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up is citizens petition to amend the existing sewer district. Anybody else come on up?
Okay, so I'm Jeff Felici with the law firm Oliver Felician Harris, and this is Don Stasco. Don's wife Barbara O'Prey is the, Dr. O'Prey is the petitioner here. And essentially, the petitioner owns the Cohasset Plaza, which is the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket plaza that contains the supermarket and the second building with the Feng Shui restaurant and the other shops. And essentially, what this proposal asks the town to do is to amend the sewer district map so as to expand the Central Cohasset Sewer District to include 14 specific parcels. And this plan over here in front of me, though I'm not looking at it directly, kind of outlines where those parcels are located.
Yeah, can I ask you, actually, because we have a kind of a speed? If you could just help us orient us to this map, so we know where the Stop &amp; Shop is and Feng Shui is and where...
Yeah, so I have three plans, unfortunately only.
Oh, sorry, we're good at sharing.
But essentially, what you're looking at in your hands over here is the actual sewer district map. And in light yellow here is what is designated to be the Central Cohasset Sewer District. And the area that's outlined in black, which is in green over here, you might just want to quickly show folks in the advisory committee, is the area where we're talking about expanding the district. And essentially, what it does is it goes from, it goes from the Stop &amp; Shop, essentially the building, the Stop &amp; Shop building, down towards the Livingstone Square, which is where the Mary Lou's is and so forth.
So it would encompass it right at the top?
Yeah, so the Mary Lou's building and the Livingston Square over here are actually these two buildings. And then all these businesses, all the way up to Sawyer Street.
And can you show me where the Stop &amp; Shop and Feng Shui is?
So it's these two parcels right here.
Okay.
And to the right of that, these kind of larger parcels here?
Yep.
This town property. This town property. This town Cohasset property.
So identify that one more time, Mr. Felici.
Yeah.
So, then I know the town-owned property.
Town-owned property is here.
Thank you.
And it actually is frontage on Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
So one more time, this pork chop one here?
No, can you keep going to the north on that?
This one?
I'm going to point her just to see what portion is town-owned.
This portion right down here to this line, okay, kind of this little rectangle, all the way back to the back edge, way back here.
You have a view here of school.
Can you show us to?
So there are three parts of the road.
Oh, you have to point it.
It's actually, I believe, it's probably three parcels.
Which is all by the town?
All by the town, right there.
What's on there now?
It's just land.
Is that behind you now?
Yes.
Yes, I know the land, yes, it's behind you.
And then the commercial properties, you have the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza here, and then you have the gas station, the Good Score, the Dunkin' Donuts, and the new restaurant there, and then the Livingston Square, which contains the Mary Lou's and the pizza. I think we, I might have missed this.
Diane? Okay, continue. I'll get to it, if I have a question, back to the board.
Thank you. So essentially, the concept here is that the petitioner has recently been issued permits by the town to allow for the construction of a third building in the Cohasset Plaza. And that would be a mixed-use building that would contain residences, affordable apartments, as well as market rate apartments, as well as retail shops, all in between, all on that Stop &amp; Shop Plaza.
Straight ahead and drive into, yep.
Exactly. And so, as part of those permits, we have the ability, we have permits for the construction of the Title V system, okay? And the property is presently located in a water resources district, a zoning overlay district, because of its proximity to water resources in the town, okay? So we brought this to the Sewer Commission, and we thought it would be, it would be nice to eliminate the need to have to put a septic system on that property. And the Sewer Commission voted to support adding these properties to the map. Now, the question is, is what would that do for the town? How would that benefit the town? And so, in addition to supporting the local businesses there on the east side of Chief Justice Cushing Highway, there would be the environmental benefit of not having a septic system in that zoning district, and that would be for the protection of wells and vital water resources. There would also be revenue that would come to the town, fairly substantial amount of revenue in the form of betterment and connection fees. And my client is proposing and will install the infrastructure on his property to town standards, all through his own costs. So the concept would be to install a pump station, a force main, and a collection system to town standards on the Stop &amp; Shop property.
And to connect it across the town property to the Evergreen Lane, which there's an eight-inch gravity feed there. So I would bear all the cost of the infrastructure to town standards. I would maintain the infrastructure at town standards. We would construct it in a way to absorb the other businesses on 3A if they wish to hook up to it. So it would be no cost to the town. It would be a revenue generator with no cost.
So a couple of questions right off the bat. So if... One question I have is, would we need to grant an easement, which this does not seek, for, let's assume this went through, and in order to take the sewer pipes from the Stop &amp; Shop property, wherever the pumping station is, across the town properties to Evergreen? We would probably have to...
That's a good question, but I do not have an answer to.
And then the other question I have is, I believe it's a state law, that if there's a sewer pipe going down a street, which is kind of presumed, if you look at this, but you're saying to contain it, but then would we have to, like, let's say, we can't offer it all the way down to, you know, Jonathan Livingston Seagull Plaza without then making it available potentially to properties on the opposite side? Is that right, or?
The property owners said they would put an easement behind their property for that line to go, so it wouldn't go into 3A.
So it would go?
Behind all the businesses.
Behind all those businesses, but there's also properties there that...
Excuse me?
They, all of these businesses above homes.
Right.
So I would imagine that's just fertile, almost not worthy of consideration, but...
Just by virtue of adding these properties to the sewer district map does not entitle the properties to connect. What would be necessary in the situation you're talking about, Diane, is if there were, if there was a sewer line, an active sewer line in the street, people would have the absolute right to a connection if they had a veteran, okay? But we're not proposing to extend the line in the street. We think it makes sense, since we're putting infrastructure on our property, to add these other properties in the map. And should they decide that they want to connect, they would have to figure out how to get the line to their property from ours.
That's similar to what if you owned a private property in town and you wanted to connect, so you can get a connection to the sewer. So the fact that the town is getting this connection is required in.
Well, what's not required is bringing the line over and putting infrastructure that would support all the other businesses.
No, but for that piece of property, you were a single homeowner in that property, you would still bear the cost of piping it to the...
For ourselves, yes.
And it's the same, so the cost structure there, that's part of the business connection insert.
In that circumstance, but where the revenue generation comes from, in addition to having this property be the sewer district in, and having it connected, would be that we then would offer the system and infrastructure on our property to other businesses, which would...
But that would be similar to connecting to the sewer in the street, if you have a piece of property that's connected to the infrastructure there. That'd be decent, I'd say.
Do you have any questions?
So this would involve wherever the town sewer in, which is essentially in the downtown area, right? How would all of this connect to the main sewer system on this?
Evergreen Lane is the eight-inch gravity feed there. Could you show us on the map where the, where the pickup is?
How would this get connected to the town sewer system?
Right here is Evergreen Lane to the central sewer district.
It's a small, two-story, block of old pasture.
So it would be a four-inch force main to an eight-inch gravity feed right there.
So this currently, that's underlucky, that's town sewer, yeah?
This is the town sewer at Evergreen.
So the connection will be from there, that's how you're going to do it? Because this is going to go to the plant, right?
Right.
Yeah, so you're going to put the line, that's where that down?
Put the infrastructure in, to handle this, put the infrastructure in, so all these businesses can dump here, all the infrastructure, they can all go elsewhere.
Now, is the, to dump into this, what is the infrastructure here? How does that connect to the main?
That's an eight-inch gravity feed there.
Right, now, from there, can it handle the flow? I presume there are probably hydraulic pumps or other pumps that would...
Well, I have all the, these will be all right, the pumps that everything, going to use.
Right, but here on us would be...
That's gravity feed, I believe, to the, you know, the, to Pella Road, I guess. There's a pump station.
Okay, so can that pump handle that's on there?
I believe so.
Because I like to know whether or not it's flowing here.
Right.
Gravity feed is fine, but there's several locations with large pumps, right? Put it over the ledge.
Right, I think there's secondary discussions, too, in terms of what the current sewer infrastructure is, in terms of capacity, in terms of the piping and the pumping, which I'm not going to ask you to address, because I want to...
I have those numbers here.
Okay. Steve and Jack, do you have any questions right now?
I don't. No, my questions are more along the lines of capacity, allocation. We've gone through several iterations of this in the past, and I think Mr. Stasco, as opposed to Ms. O'Prey, in the past had proposed, although I don't know that ever made town be, proposed bringing a line up 3A. And at that time, the commission had no position on, you know, on what the allocation of resources should be.
The Sewer Commission.
The Sewer Commission. And I'd like to hear about that now, because, you know, frankly, if there's a possibility of, two things, if there's a possibility of sewer-ing the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza and other relatively high-outfit businesses, get them away from septic, well, that would be a plus. Having lived on Pharaoh's Lane, there was a restaurant that would have abutted this in the past, and you all affectionately knew it was the underage drinking spot, no, it's Coca Island, I'm sorry, that had severe problems with their septic system. There's not a whole lot of drain, natural drainage in the soil, so it would be attractive to do that. But we have a limited resource, and I'd like to hear what their view is. The other piece of that is that if that, in fact, hooked up, it might unlock a... it might unlock a substantial amount of value in existing land there that either could be used to a higher level, or might actually get built out in the first place. And that's, from the town's perspective, that might be attractive. I should say that might be attractive, that could be very attractive, so... I'm done.
I'll ask questions from the audience if they have any, but one other thing, Chris, my, and I think I have it right, it's Peppermint Brook, is back here maybe on the town land? Or...
Yes.
But if, yeah, if we could just, if we could get sort of a topographical map that shows us where some of the vulnerable, oh yeah, I can just go on Muni, but it would be great if we understood sort of what kind of, what that town land is like and what is possible there, you know? I mean, if there's a protected watershed area, can we even put pipes, you know, get a pipe up there? So, okay, Mike?
To your point, this was a question I wanted to raise. Can we find out what the wetland edge is throughout that entire area? The wetland edge, where the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission takes over, where they would have to rule, or either take a permit application from you.
Yeah, there would be one area that the pipe would be going underneath the wetlands.
It would be going underneath.
Right.
So, that's a concern, and would be a pretty complicated permit, I would expect. I haven't seen the Lauren article, so I'm not quite sure, other than what you briefly described, Diane, in opening up the discussion here. What is it that the town is being asked for? What do you want the town to provide?
The right to put the pipe through town property to Evergreen Lane.
No, no, that's not, that's not what is on this work. What's on this work is simply the amendment to the sewer district map to add fourteen specific parcels to that map. What happens after that would be, the onus, Mr. Stasco wishes to attempt to connect, then we would have to go through a further process at that point to do that.
Which would include potential easements?
Exactly.
Concon permitting or whatever permitting.
Sort, yeah, Concon.
Establishments and betterments and whatever.
Stamps better, easements across, you know, in one process.
This simply gets us to the table to have a discussion about those issues.
One question I have, it's somewhat political, but why did you extend it beyond Sawyer Street to those other properties?
Well, we think that it would be a benefit for those other properties, because they also operate septic systems in this area. And we think that if we're going to do that, if we're going to bring the line to our property, it would be a bigger benefit to the town if we were to include other properties in this map.
It was also recommendation, it's real pressure.
Just, and I think what I said earlier when Steve Weiner was presenting on the electrical aggregation, these are just things that I think the average citizen are going to bring up at town meeting. And, you know, I am having a hard time wrapping my head around an extended sewer pipe behind these buildings adjacent to residences and that kind of thing. So, I do think that that's probably something that, you know, you need to find a way to articulate better, just in terms of, like, I get the money and the betterments, but to me, it's like, wait a minute, what? They don't, they can, and they don't have, you know what I mean? I understand it would be on them to...
It would be on them, and we're not asking the town to approve a particular situation that does that.
Right.
All we're asking the town to approve is to amend the map.
Amend the map.
And then, to the extent that it's feasible in the future, it might not be feasible.
Right, right, that's where I mean, so, yeah.
That's another issue.
Yep.
Wouldn't it be best to vet the option of whether you can bury the pipe through the wetlands?
Exactly.
Prior to this, because I think if you're not able to bury a pipe through wetlands, I think the point's moot.
Potentially.
Yeah, I'm not sure where else you'd hook up the pipe. You'd have to run down Sawyer Street, probably onto Ripley Road. Any other options I could see? If you block the water bowl there through the town properties, because of the Peppermint Brook and wetlands, only that location would be running down Sawyer.
The only, the problem with vetting that out or seeking those permits is that we don't have the right to seek those permits, and there's a certain engineering cost and so forth. The way we're approaching this is to first to get this in place, and then to see if it's possible from there, because there's...
I understand, but it just seems to be...
There's a cost involved with the process.
Right, and it just seems to be options for draining in that area to this, for septic purposes. You're looking at where you can hook up, or if you block the wetlands. And that's, I think, the big, it seems to be, the big deal.
But you are right in that you, it is, you can't go and even seek an opinion, even an advisory opinion from Concon, until you have negotiated potential easements with the town to...
But my point is, you could get expansion of the district.
In a different way.
And run the pipe by different locations.
Right, right. But then that, right.
If you've got the option, that you're now a member of the district, you have to, I would think, have the available option to connect somewhere. And how do you connect? And I see the option would be running down 3A or running down Sawyer.
Right. I also think, I'll take questions in a second, but I also think, I will say just for tonight, that tomorrow night, there is a regional sewer discussion at 6:30 at Wilka Commons on Sawyer Street. So, that's probably, that's another hesitancy I have, because there are bigger global visions for sewer in Cohasset. And I think that that conversation, you know, needs to take place, and I encourage everybody to go to that meeting tomorrow night. John first, and then...
On the map, is everything employed currently outside of the district? On the map, is everything employed on the left-hand side of that map currently outside of the district?
Yes. So, why, your priority and those other thirteen parcels and not the rest of that?
Why just those fourteen parcels? Why not everybody, give everybody a chance to do what you're suggesting, if they so choose?
Well, in conversation with the Sewer Commission, this is what they felt that they could handle as far as flow, and still have other capacity for other areas in the community that, you know, that need to be sewed. So, they, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think they have a, they want a capacity of forty thousand gallons per day. This would be about ten, so that would leave them thirty thousand gallons in other areas.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to take one question, and then I am going to have the Sewer Commission, or there's a representative, yeah, I'll let them speak on their own. Do you want to pass one? All right, if you don't mind, just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, John Beck, Forty-four Nichols Road, a member of the Sewer Commission. I prepared a statement that is mine. I'm not speaking for the commission, and I'd like to share it with everyone. The Sewer Commission has not taken a position regarding this proposed petition other than to not oppose the opponent's right to petition town meeting to consider his desire to create the new sewer district. The purpose of that district would be allow the connection of the property at Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, and possibly others to the town sewer. You've heard about that earlier. There have been numerous discussions at our public meetings, the Sewer Commission, regarding this proposed sewer district. The most important consideration for the Sewer Commission is the use of existing excess capacity at our treatment plant. The commission has long held and often stated the view that new connections should be preferably granted to existing homes rather than new construction. It's also a fact that Commonwealth law requires that a proposed connection to the town sewer must be granted if the following conditions are met. There's an existing sewer line adjacent to the property that's desiring to connect. The property must be in an existing sewer district, and there is adequate capacity in the collection system and treatment plant to accommodate the proposed sewage flow. You've already touched on the fact tonight that establishing the district that's being proposed is not the end to that, because there is no existing sewer line adjacent to the property that desires to connect. There's an intervening town property. The question of the use of existing excess capacity at our treatment plant is not a simple one. The commission has made it clear in many meetings that extending the boundaries of existing sewer districts to include South Main Street and adjacent properties which drain into the Gulf River is the most critical area without sewers in Cohasset. There's enough existing capacity in the treatment plant to accommodate the addition of South Main Street and adjacent properties. We've suggested the need for discussions with situant to see if there may be common interest in helping resolve their north-situate lack of sewers. Any excess capacity in our treatment plant could be of value in those discussions, should they proceed. We'll talk more about that tomorrow night. We've also discussed the need for addressing a potential reduction of allowable nitrogen discharge from our treatment plant. That potential reduction could be required by the state DEP. Doing so may have the effect of essentially reducing the available excess capacity at our treatment plant. Personally, I have concluded that with fair consideration for all, the greater good will be served by not approving this citizen's petition to create the proposed new sewer district. It's my personal opinion. We have nothing to vote on in that regard, so be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mark? Yeah? It's Mark, right?
Yes, the application also might be more powerful. We have the names of the other potential beneficiaries along the proposed line of the sewer.
Well...
Meaning, it's not simply, do they want it? Would they connect? Would they, is this truly a revenue generator for the town? Because it doesn't affect just one property.
Right, well, I mean, this was, this is a citizen's petition, and it has, you know, the required signatures, which I can't read, just because it's a bad photocopy. But, I mean, there are ten citizens, they can be from anywhere in town to petition town meeting to address this. Typically, you know, if it were an article that were being proposed by the selectmen, we would certainly make sure we have as many answers to as many financial questions as we could. In this case, it's incumbent upon the petitioners to do that, you know, provide that information where it exists. You know, and I think, I think it's impractical, frankly, to specifically address that.
No, I understand, I get it, yeah.
Yep. Well, I'll take Paul, and then you ask. Go ahead, Paul.
When these properties get put into the sewer district, does that give them additional rights beyond being able to connect to a sewer line if it's adjacent? Are there other rights that they have to the management pipe or anything like that?
I don't think so. I mean, I think that, John, you might know, I mean, literally, if they had, let's... If all of these properties, if this district were approved, and these properties had the ability to connect to sewer, does it give them, does it give them any other right other than to pay to put in the infrastructure and connect to sewer through a betterment or whatever? I don't see that there's anything.
No. The only right they would have is if a town sewer came into the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, for example, as a result of this.
Right.
And they, on the other side of Sawyer Street, petitioned, and with the property owner's permission, obviously, granting easements and et cetera, then potentially, they could choose to hook up to the sewer. But there would be a lot of steps in between before that would be, would happen. They would have no inherent rights at all, since there's no sewer.
And they would all have to probably agree and...
Yes.
Pay for it, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Right, so, okay, one more.
I think it would create an enhanced liability down the sewer district then for increased flow, which would then back-channel a bigger investment, including another problem for the town.
Good.
It's definitely a possibility, I mean, it definitely, it definitely uses up some of the capacity that exists.
Not just capacity, but actual cost, I mean, the infrastructure cost to supply that.
Right.
Because the connection's due to the pipe, the connection is not, right, capacity.
Correct, the capacity cost, right, right, to use it, yeah. Jeff, did you have something?
I just wanted to hear from Clark, the planning board. Do you have any, want to weigh in on this? How does this integrate with the plans that are going on for 3A, potentially a pipe on 3A?
I do have some thoughts, but I have a conflict, so, I'll have to take that offline.
Okay. Maybe somebody else from the planning board doesn't have a conflict could weigh in at some point? I know there's nobody here, but...
Okay. All right, selectmen, we done asking questions? Stasco and Stidham, thank you both very much.
So, before we leave the warrant, I want to turn your attention to two new pieces that popped, that have popped up that are comparative, they're in the section called following our placeholders versus... So, if you jump to this, after, you know, go through, go to number thirteen, and then turn the page.
Lucky number thirteen.
And then you'll see A, and then B, C, D, E, and then, it's two names, it's G and H. So, keep going until you get to G and H, and make splainies to it. The first is an update to the animal control fines. Apparently, the state law, state has, our fines are fairly diverse. The state law allows localities to set fines that are higher but not lower, and state fines are now higher than ours. So, effectively, so, Chief Quigley mentioned this, it's a point in the South meeting the other day. I talked to council, and council has suggested that we amend the biolaws to reflect the state law, which is higher fines. So, it's really almost, we kind of, we don't have to do it, but we should do it to get the biolaws clean, so, if the animal control office is writing tickets. And again, I can just show you what state law is, and we're going to put that in there. So, I would recommend that I get the form of warrant, and I'll give you more of the information. The other article, the assessors came to us just this week. They're, as you know, that one of the areas of taxation is personal property, and it's mostly, you know, restaurants and stuff like that. It's not like you're your personal property, it's business property. There's a current threshold for taxation. They want to raise it to five thousand dollars, if you have less than five thousand, not going to assess it, because, and apparently, there's eighty-seven of these that generate twenty-nine hundred dollars in tax. And then, it's just not worth it, it takes too much time. So, they wanted to raise the threshold to five thousand dollars, and... And it would, again, the minimum sentence of $2,900 has no real incentive for taxes at all, but it does save them a lot of time in agreement.
And if somebody could have a stove worth that, is that the kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, and this is, this is, again, I'm, I'm not going to get into the mechanisms of personal property taxation. It's, it's really mostly business property. But again, it could be, it could be a small operation as an oven or something. And, yeah, so, so I would recommend that that also get put on the warrant.
This is not inclusive of excise, correct?
No, 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 this is, this is not excise stuff. This is not votes and cars. This is just, you know, the...
State and personal property.
It's the personal property, just, just personal.
Could we, could we possibly just queue up for our...
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Which is March 12th, but to like literally vote all of these on the warrant.
I just want to let you know these are on here. This should be it. I said, look, speak there for a majority piece of the last department meeting, so, but these are both worthy of, I think, inclusion and, so, that's it. I, I have nothing else for you tonight that can't wait. So, I'm going to pass on later. Except for the fact, just to remind you that there is a public meeting tomorrow night to talk about. Just talking about, there's no votes, nothing like that. Just to give the public an update and other boards about the conversation at regional sewer situation.
What, what time, wait?
6:30, Wilka Common, main, main room, 6:30 PM. See you soon.
Okay, selectmen comments, Kevin?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Paul? All right, Jeff?
I just wanted to ask Chris and Diane if we could get some time on the agenda to actually get a presentation on the budget? You know, I just want to go through the CAFR. I had some questions. Maybe our director of finance could be there to help us.
Through on the CAFR or on the budget?
On, on the, on the CAFR.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, last year's.
Sure. Anything, anything that you want to, if there's anything in advance, I...
Give me a question, I'll, I'll get an answer.
I'll call.
Steve?
Let's go.
I, I appreciate that, but I do have two quick things. Could you remind people about their all facility stickers? Because they do expire, I believe, at the end of March.
The all facility stickers expire at the end of March under our new, under the timeline. Stickers will go on sale, I want to say March 13th. Is that sound right, Tracy?
Yes, it does.
They'll be available at the clerk's office. You can do them online. She is taking, if people want to go in and just leave the material, she's not going to sell them in advance, but if people have all their stuff all done, they can leave it with the clerk, and then she could process them and send them to them when the deadline comes. So, it's something of a clean, you know, application. They can just bring their stuff in and, and talk to the clerk's office and just prepare a pack and leave it with her in advance. And it's also going to be sold at, you can do them online, you get a simple application, it's online. As long as your car is, you know, if your car is leased through, you know, California, it's going to be complicated, you got a lease agreement, you got to show all that stuff.
Okay.
March 13th. And the other is a topic not reasonably anticipated.
Right, and I, before we hit the topic not reasonably anticipated, which is to hear about something that's in front of the planning board, I just want to acknowledge Abigail Adams. This is her last meeting as we're working with Cohasset Mayor with us. She's expecting...
Congratulations.
The position that starts next week, not much time on, with NESN. No, Nessin. Nessin. Yes. Yes, NESN.
This sports?
Yes, this is a sports network. As a contact producer. So, congratulations, thank you for... And just because of something that we referred to the planning board relating to an overlay district or a table of charts in the harbor area, they do need us to get updated on what's going on. And so, this is under topics not reasonably anticipated.
From the planning board.
Tell us why this is not reasonably anticipated.
Thank you for letting me come in. The, the planning board opened up our public hearings on the harbor zoning, which would allow residential use in some of the harbor properties. And what we quickly found out is there were more kind of questions that were raised by what was proposed. So, as an alternate, what we have is something called an overlay district that is concentrated at the end of the cove or on the west end of the cove for potential residential use. And what we, what we need, the planning, what the planning board has done is open the public hearing. At our last meeting, we had a packed crowd that seemed willing to make comments against what we were reviewing, which was the residential change for the harbor, the waterfront business district.
Which included all around the harbor.
And what we quickly talked about is this overlay, which is a, sort of a, it's, it's another zoning method. And if, and council said it was different enough that we should repubblically advertise and open a new public hearing with this overlay concept. But we think the overlay concept solves a lot of problems that have been raised to date. And what, what we need from the selectmen right now is to ask the planning board to hold a public hearing for this overlay zoning concept at the harbor. And I can answer any questions.
Okay, I just want to summarize because I think my understanding is what we had, what we had referred to you for hearings.
Yeah.
Included possibly changing, adding residential use to like where Atlantica is and some adjacent properties.
That's right.
And, and that was a concern in the hearing process. So, now all, now you're just rejiggering the mechanism, and it's only for the area around Cohasset Harbor Inn and across the street.
That's right, so...
Add residential use.
The way an overlay district works is the existing districts zoning remain in place, and the overlay allows different uses for that overlay area. We've done several overlays in the past. We did a transportation-oriented district over the train station. We did a Sperrod senior residential overlay, which then became Toll Brothers. And so, this would be a third in our history of an overlay district. So, it incorporates a part of the downtown business district that's at the harbor and the, the site that's, that's currently the Cohasset Harbor Inn. And we feel that this is the kind of core area that is ready to be transformed. And what the overlaying language allows us to do is to kind of have a public interest that is, is clear in language that we put into our village district in terms of FAR and having a certain percentage of commercial and, and things that we've learned from the village. So, it more resembles the village bylaw than what was drafted by the consultant. The consultant's working on the final language and will be wordsmithing it during the public hearing process. So, right, right now, we, we just need the, the board of selectmen to recommend to have a public hearing process by the planning board.
One quick question.
Yep.
Would it still require, so let's say this were to be approved in the overlay district, would it still require the same special permit process?
It would. Same exact special permit, which is a super minority, so four out of five members would have to, whatever applicant, bring an application in, we'd have to, four out of five would have to be convinced everything, everything seems right and is in the public benefit or public interest.
And the, the other option is still open, right? So, the planning board is going to deliberate on which option.
The planning board hasn't closed that. We may, upon opening this new public hearing, and in terms of scheduling, it's currently scheduled for the 13th of March. So, we may vote on that previous version on the, on the same night. I can't say for sure.
But this has to be posted in enough time that we need to make a decision tonight?
That's right.
So, we wanted to have this location. I wanted to make sure town council is clear that it's not exclusionary zoning, which may play a role where there's special permits requiring overpricing or giving a minute. And that's not, I want to show it to you, because exclusionary zoning is one, is one concept which looks similar to what's...
I'll look into that. There's a concept called spot zoning, which is problematic. And one of the reasons why we expanded it to include parts of the waterfront business district and the downtown business district is to avoid that. And my, my understanding is council's okay with, with this approach.
You said...
It's a, it's a special council, this is Murphy Hesse, not, not...
There's no evidence of exclusionary zoning. Just want to be clear.
I will follow up on it.
Special counsel might ask for it.
And give me an answer.
I'm willing to support it, but I want to make sure it's not considered exclusionary zoning.
And that, that can get discussed in the planning board in the open, in the meeting.
That's right.
So...
And I'll report back.
So, if any of the selectmen have other questions, otherwise, that what I, what I, what we will need is a motion or not to refer.
So, if we approve, if we approve this, when will we, and the public, get to see what the more specific warrant out will, will look like? Because the devil's in the details, they...
It is, of course.
So, I mean, that's going to be, there's a lot of serious concerns there in terms of heights of the buildings that will be allowed and the number of potential developments and...
We'll be opening the public hearing on the 13th of March. But in terms of heights, we're not changing anything in terms of heights.
Right.
Based on the zoning.
So, how, how, how are all those details that really are going to be the meat of this?
Yes.
How are they going to be decided on? And when are they, are they going to be shown to the public before the meeting? Or is that something you bring up during the forum?
We'll have that available.
Hold this together?
We will have that available as a part of that public hearing.
So, when you, when you issue a public hearing notice for this, you'll issue more details up on the website, so, is that...
We will.
And then you'll go over, go over that, those specifications, which are going to be somewhat critical, and then have a vote at some point?
And there are important...
If you decide to do that, right?
There are important details in terms of height and density.
Parking.
What the percentage of mixed use is, parking is an example, what the size of the units could be. Those are all critical details that we've learned from the village bylaw.
And you're going to discuss that with the planning board, going to discuss and decide that in open session, is that right?
That's right. Make sure we've got the details right.
Move, I'd move that we refer to the planning board, the concept of a, an overlay district, residential overlay district at the harbor, with the purpose of the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
For a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.